County Commission and work session for February 5th. Commissioner Simpkins, would you leave some prayer, please?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for giving us this great day that we have enjoyed the pretty weather. Be with us tonight as we make decisions for the people in this great county. Be with our soldiers who are way on foreign soils that you allow them to come back home safely. Be with us tonight as we leave and be travel back home. Be with our loved ones. Ask this in your name, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Chairman for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Mr. Simpkins.
Here.
Mr. Ledger.
Here.
Mr. McElwain.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Dawson.
Here.
Ms. Spicer. Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Mr. Britt.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Mr. Grove.
Here.
Ms. Gray.
Do have a quorum. It's good to see you all tonight. First order of business with approval of the minutes of the January 2nd, 2024 work session. Open floor for motion, motion by Commissioner Petty, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number two, committee reports. Any committees to report? Seeing none, item number three is appointments. All three members of the Civil Service Board are up for reappointment. Ms. Margaret Martindale, Ms. Sarah Ann Jones, and Mr. Chip Miller. They've all indicated they'd like to continue to serve. Open floor for motion minutes on a regular session. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ledger. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Under new business, item number one, quarterly financial reports. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of started out reviewing these quarterly reports, the second quarter ending December 31st of this past December 2023, skeptical like because with the price of things this last couple of years and as I got to going through them, it really didn't turn out that way. Everything, we've been doing so well for years now and I kind of thought it might turn. And it didn't do that. The revenues are still in good shape for all the funds and all the funds that we oversee on this side. And the expenditures are still in pretty good shape also. The only fund that was kind of a little bit out of bounds was the Highway Department. And that was on their hot mix, their crushed down and their liquid mix if they call it, but theirs can kind of get that away if they hit it hard in the first half of the year. Now that kind of leave them a little bit maybe shy of their, of having supplies for the second half, but what they did, the state set aside a lot of state aid money for this year. And so they will have the 2% that we're required to have in their hot mix and their liquid and that type thing for the second half of the year that we can amend to and get more. We have the 2% required to do that, but we can also amend in there when we get those documents to say how much we'll need. So even that's not even on the bad side of things. It's just that we've spent quite a bit of the budget right now on the first side because they did a lot of paving this past summer and fall. So I really, looking at everything, it still looks good, but I kind of started out thinking that we might be in some bad shape on some of the funds and it doesn't look that way even now because inflation and that type thing, I thought we might be in trouble, but we're not. Doesn't look like to me. The revenue still look good all across the board. So if you don't have any questions or if you have any questions, ask me. I didn't get anything from Ms. Gray yet. But I didn't send it till Friday afternoon, so I didn't give you enough time, probably.
Yes. And as I was just running down looking for negatives, and a lot of these funds, we didn't budget, but we've got expenditures, but I know there's stuff that we talked about.
Yeah, and it'll be some stuff with like 171 fund or 127 fund maybe.
Right.
That's the IRP money and the capital projects funds. Yeah. And the money's there, so we, that's the mayor's fund that we talk about back and forth. We will amend that because those monies are in those funds. But it's kind of like, let's wait and see what comes up and then we'll amend to those. So yeah, because good questions and I knew somebody would finally hit me up on that, but we will amend those and I may start mending them next month, but we certainly will in two months, three months or whatever. But I think they're labeled what the projects are, so you can see that, but the monies are there for those. Yes. Yeah, Randy.
Don, will the, our EMS as far as hiring new people in this year, is that going to have an effect on that budget or would there be money?
Yeah.
In there or?
Yeah, yeah, we'll have the money. And you may wish to ask the mayor on that, but yes, we'll, we'll have the money there for that. Yes.
So requires to move some money into it, but we have savings coming from the money on these. Just talked about it. I'm old. What do you call those? School resource officers. Thank you.
SROs.
SROs. For the money the state put forward, you know, we allowed some of that money for raises for the Sheriff's Department. We did that several months ago and then there's still an abundance of money there. We're hoping a good portion that'll take care of what we just did for the paramedics. So we, once we get these final quarterly numbers in third quarter, we can give you a good answer because it's kind of what I talked about last time when we were doing that amendment. I, with the, the good news is our revenue is really good right now. The bad news is inflation is really good right now. So we'll have, once third quarter is done, March 31st numbers, I'll have a better feel for it as we go into April on that and I can give you a really good number then.
If I may, are we having luck finding people right now since we've did what we did two weeks ago? Are we having?
Mr. Mayor and I met today to, because the, the pay raise that y'all approved wouldn't be implemented on the next paycheck. So we were doing the background work on that. He had two people that were leaving that are staying now. He has two people that left that are coming back and several inquiries. So thank you for what you did because that's, again, that, that was a market difference to get us up where we're competitive with other ambulance services. So I appreciate y'all for all that. Was any questions?
Anybody have questions?
We'll open the floor for motion. This is me, this on the regular session. Motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Britt. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Item number two is long road and Franklin Road speed limit change request. Commissioner Simpkins.
Yes, I'd like the sheriff to address that. He knows the weather, I think, has been playing an issue in it.
Yes, sir. I contacted Commissioner Simpkins. We were running a, our typical five to seven day speed study and the snow got us, the speed box was destroyed. We went to retrieve it after the ice got off the roads and found it had been ran over by a vehicle. The box, it says, is indestructible. It will skin up. It's, as my grandfather would say, the innards didn't do so well. So we sent it, we did send it off to the, to the manufacturer. They're going to assess it, see if it might be repaired. And we're trying to, they're, they're working on getting us a loaner sent back out while they make a determination whether this thing is dead on arrival or if it can be repaired. And so I, unfortunately, I do not. We did try to recapture the data. Because when we called them, they said, don't touch it, just send it in and we'll see if we can retrieve anything. And it was beyond retrieval. So I do not have a speed report for long road or Franklin.
All those, Commissioner Simpkins, you'd like to move those to March's meeting? There's no objection. We'll move those, put those on the March agendas. Thank you, Sheriff. Next item, number three is two mile road. That's not a, a notification, that's not a vote, but it's notification. This is the portion of two mile road from Hogan Road to the fuel terminal. When we had the, the settlement over the lawsuit with the Titan Partners, one of the agreements word was take that road in whenever it was complete and meets county specifications. Mr. Hodges has looked at and it does. We've delayed it because they had left some equipment over there on the sides of the road and we wouldn't, we didn't want to bring this to y'all till the road was completely cleaned off and ready to go. So again, this is not a boat requirement. I'm just notifying you because for y'all that were here and may not recall, y'all that weren't here, that was part of the settlement negotiation that once that road is complete, we had taken it into county road. So be glad to answer your questions on that. You don't, this is the, we're talking about the portion from Hogan Road to the terminal. This other portion, and then good question on that. Whenever the asphalt plants open back up, they think it will be fully complete by April 15th. Most of rock work and base work has been done or some of that has to be done, but the pavement is, once you bank up, is up, is going, they think the road will be complete on April 15th. It is.
Is the new road, it's a, it's a call aside, just that Indian Road had to get the terminal to that road.
It is.
There's no future plan.
There's a cutout left on the plan on approval, carry it further southbound to the property line on that. And we can show you what it is, but it's, they, it's still owned by the company. It's not ours and it's owned by the real estate company that also owns it, but they dedicated to carrying that roadway because you're almost, you're about the point where it turns southbound, but it just runs to proper line. There's no plan to finish at this point and there's other property owners you'd have to cross to get to a porter road. And also a creek down there. You'd have to build quite the bridge to get up on the other side. So I hope y'all get opportunity to do that after I leave. We're paying attention. Okay, good. But I just want to notify that it won't show back up. That was a notification because we're in the process of taking that in. Item number four is Old Highway 48, Earl Leach Road and Cinder Road speed limit changes. Commissioner McElwain.
Make it 35. And then sender down by the dumpster and Earl Leach. I want to get 20, coming right through the middle of someone furnished there and back up to 48.
Good. So we need a steady down on that.
I think they've all looked at it. Yeah. Is that right, Tim?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioner, that, it's that little bitty stretch of road that they have a lot of activity at public furnace. Car shows, spring flings, tall flings. It's that little section, Cinder Road is that little section that.
It's by the dumpster.
By the, by the convenience. By the, by the convenience. And then Earl Leach is narrow and crooked.
Up the hill, yeah. Oh, 48. What portion of that was that again?
Well, that'll be from, is it about Daniel Lane, Jackie?
And it'll go all the way up where Daniel Lane meets and then turn and go back to highway.
Good. Commissioner Simkins drives the other part of Old 48 and I think he likes to drive fast, so I just want to speak for him on that.
Yeah, I would hope it's 45. And I will, I will say, we have got a few that like to drive more than that.
Probably steel wheel, yeah.
A lot of things are slowing down on my road.
Yeah, it's, once they paved it, it got really easy to drive fast on. This is motion by Commissioner McElwain. I need a second. Second by Commissioner Grove. Any other questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number five is transfer vehicle from Sheriff's Department to Dixie County Rescue Squad, Sheriff Eads.
Yes, uh, several weeks ago, we were contacted by the Dixie County Rescue Squad to make an inquiry, see if we had any surplus vehicles that, that, that they, that we might donate to them. We had one, it's an old Ford Taurus police package. I sent the VIN number and the particulars to Star. I, I know it's probably in excess of 168,000 miles or something like that. And it would take y'all's approval to donate that. Think the auction value on it is probably 12 to $1,500. And they could use it as a spare vehicle to respond far, volunteer firefighters. We won't strip it totally. We'll leave the wiring for lights and all of that intact for them. Just take the decals off and so they sent that request to me and I asked the mayor to put it on the agenda for y'all's consideration. That keep it in service to, public service to the citizens of Dixon County.
Open floor for a question or a motion. That was a motion by Commissioner Spicer. That's second, Commissioner Dawson. Any question or discussion for Sheriff Eads? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number six, reappraisal program is Yuni Martin, our Associate of Property.
Thank y'all. Part of the process of turning over a new reappraisal, the state requires the next one be planned and that's what this is. It is the review portion of the program, which is at this point a four-year process to get to a five-year reappraisal because that's what Dixon County's own right now. We do 25% annually and then you reappraise on that fifth year. So that's what they have prepared. It's, there's not a lot of change from the last one that we had in 2019. 2019 was our first five-year cycle that we, that Dixon County had ever been on. And my understanding is this will probably be our last one if we get there. So from what I know y'all have heard being told that the cycles will gradually come down and we'll get closer and closer. So we've, we've got a lot of information on that, but we don't have anything in law yet. So, but I'll be happy to answer questions when I know the answers, of course. There's a few things in the packet that y'all should have gotten that I was going to point out. Again, it's gives you the parcel count. These are just my real, these are just my real property parcels. These are, these are dirt. This does not include the personal property count. This is for the review. And it shows the years and the maps that we'll be checking. On page nine, the color-coded map there, there is a, there is a method to that madness as far as the way we maintenance that program. This allows my field evaluator to be in the field and we kind of break it down so that in the summer months, when things are churning, when houses are being built, he's kind of in the central area of each one of these, these years. And then in the winter months, when things are not as bad, it lets him be in the rural areas so that, I mean, and you've got leaf off which ma, which makes the maintenance pro, process a lot easier. So there is, there is method to that. And then there is one correction that I found after the fact. On page 15, I do have another full-time office clerk, Ms. Molly Sessler. She is my front office clerk. She came to work with us in August of 23. So I do have that position. And then I also have a part-time assistant clerk, Ms. Jennifer Purnell, and she's been with me since October of 2021. So I will correct that. And then of course, there's a resolution in there that has to be prepared and passed for the, for the Division of Property Assessment to be able to present it to the State Board of Equalization for a final approval.
This is a five-year, we did this last in 2019, so we're a reappraisal year, so this will roll it for another five, but Ms. Martin stated, the state of Tennessee, because of the jump in values and the the big jumps that we had to take, they were looking at compressing the time on reappraisals down to, I think you're sharing two, three or four years on that, which it'll quit that yo-yo effect and ratio years that she'll hold a class on one night that y'all can attend and take notes from me. So, which is boring, but so basically.
Make it fun.
I'm not sure how, but I'll let somebody else tell me how. But basically, we're moving this one, move this for director session so we can renew our five years on this. So absolutely.
A little bit confused, I think. So in those, you're, you're reappraising the 25% of the property every year, the fifth year. Is that when the tax rate is recertified then? And all that is, so in other words, those 25% of properties are not increased that year. They're held to the fifth year. Is that right?
If there's changes, it's, it's a maintenance program, basically. It's, it's review. The, the statute says you have to review so many a year in each, in each different program. And so if we find a change, if you've put a barn up, if you've added a wood deck, if you've torn one down, those are when we discover those type of things. And those change, but everybody's doesn't change, but it's just those 20, that 25% that's under review at that point in time. And, you know, and then of course you add all the other stuff on top of it, new construction and mapping and all the other things go into play every year. But this is just this one component of the process. And it's always been lined up that you reviewed so many years and then that last year you reappraised and that was based, that was the cycle you were on. And of course, this law change will make that all, it'll make that all different. That is in the reappraisal year. So you'll get a certified rate this year when we get done. And you'll get us, and if we, and if we stay on this, if the law changes and we stay on this reappraisal, you will not get another certified rate until 29.
But this, we'll be setting a new tax rate this year before the budget's done. So the tax rate's going to go down. The rate. But it's all, but it all equals out. And Oliver on Fairview Road, have you done any work on your house? I mean, she'd like to, you sure?
That fine barn you had over there?
Any question? I'm sorry, Commissioner Beatty.
Question was, it says a five-year plan. The resolution says six. Just is that?
Well, I think it, I think it's a uniform resolution. If you read down in there, it, it talks about five and six. I mean, five and four as well. And it, we are on a five. I think it's a uniformed resolution, basically.
It's a, and it is, but we went on to set out part of her package, but Mr. Reagan will prepare one specific for us. That's just an example of that. Any other questions, Ms. Martin? What we're doing is looking for a motion, a second to move this on a regular session. Motion by Commissioner Spicer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thanks, y'all.
Item number seven is Project Vulcan. It's not Project Vulcan, it's Project Vulcan. Let me tell you what, what that is. As y'all know, we work on economic development all times. Ms. Terry Malone is Economic Development Officer for Dixon County and she, she works a lot of different companies getting, filling out requests for information and different things of that type. Project Vulcan is one that has come to us that she's been working on for the last several months. They're looking at buying what we call the Canterbury site in the industrial park. That's if you go through there, that's the one across from the concrete company and Lewis, and up for you to Lewis Lumber and Bridgestone. It's on the left there. We've owned for some time jointly with the City of Dixon. We had, to put what Project Vulcan is in perspective, we're, they're down to two sites. It's between us and a site in Piedmont area, North Carolina. The Dow tile project was $180 million investment, which was huge back 10 years ago. It was 10 years ago, actually, it's coming in March, which is huge investment. The investment on this is a $345 million investment, almost double what Dow tile was. So we're working with them on putting together a tax incentive, being competitive to see if we can get them here. But we're not going to offer them the standard tax incentive that the Industrial Development Board can do, which is seven years. We're going to, we're trying to put something together that's competitive, but also fair to our, the taxpayers. But what we're asking for tonight is, is just simply to have this move forward to the February 20th meeting. They are due to make a decision between us and the City of North Carolina on February 15th. So at that point in time, we can come bring it back to y'all and disclose the company and everything that's with that. It's an industry though that we've vetted. It's a clean industry. It's a industry we'd be proud to have here. So it's not anything nasty or gooey or anything like that. So, but that, that's really at this point because our competitive situation, I can't answer a lot more questions on it, but I can go in, it'll be roughly around 150 jobs and the average salary is $62,000 a year. So it's, 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 it's the industry that we need to seek out and have in Dixon County and that's what Ms. Malone is doing for us right now. Open motion. Thank you, Commissioner Grove, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of, I'm sorry, Commissioner Williams?
I don't know that I've ever gotten that, what the, the board is authorized to deal.
We get your copy of that?
Copy of that.
Yeah, we can, I'll get Ms. Malone to email. If you'd all like to see it, it's a seven-year deal and it's, it's standard, but honestly, in the world we're in now, unless it was a industry that's already here that's doing expansion, it's not competitive out trying to bring in new industry, but if somebody want to expand, we'd do that. It's in the pocket of the, it was approved by the County Commission years ago, many years ago, maybe even four year time on the commission the first time and the City of Dixon. So the Industrial Development Board has authority to offer that without coming back to us. If we do anything larger than that, it has to come back to, to y'all or whatever city it's in, which of course industrial parks and City of Dixon. So on Project Vulcan, you'll both have to prove it, but I can get you a copy of that. All of you will send it to you. Have a motion, a second. Any other questions? I didn't mean to get ahead of us. All right. Hearing no other questions. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Any other business from commissioners? Under announcements of the snowstorm threw us off stride, Commissioner Simkins had another birthday. And he did, and Commissioner Spicer had a birthday and retired all at the same time. But yours is really special. Barry does. She's, she can't even comment, that Commissioner Grove. She, she agrees with her silence. Well, happy birthday to you both and happy retirement to you. So we all hope to follow you here soon. If there's no other announcements, the last announcement be the next work session meeting. Before I do that, remember we're, the regular session, because of the President's Day holiday, we meet on Tuesday, the 20th. So we're, you've got 15 days for our next, for this meeting. But the next work session will be on March 4, 2024. At 7:00 PM, the Beaufort Dale Bootery Jr., County Commission Chamber, the Dixie County Administration Building, Forecourt Square, Charlotte, Tennessee. Have a motion, second?